We will start with opening statements. Ms. Brenner, will you start? You've got one minute. Your timers are in the front. They're going to hold up a paddle. They're going to give you a 15-second warning. And when you get to the end, you're going to get a stop. And if you don't stop, I will stop you. Okay? All right. So I'm sorry about this microphone business. I suggested to them, since we only have one mic, that maybe when they become commissioners, they can vote for another one. Ms. Brenner, your timers are ready.
You ready?
Yes.
I guess I'm going to stand because I've got this thing in front of me and I'm short. So here we go. Hi, I'm Carol Brenner and I'm ready for Commissioner for District One. I'm ready for Commissioner because I just believe that we need a government we deserve better. We deserve better from our government. Professionally, I am a real estate broker, appraiser, community manager, as well as I'm a real estate educator. So I come with a wide scope of real-world business experience in finance. I've got management. I understand budgets. So other than the headlines, I am on two. But right now, and...
Ms. Brenner? Okay. Mr. Merker.
Good evening, everyone. I am David Merker. I'm ready, willing, and able to start working as your City Commissioner the moment I take office. Yes, I'm the voice that represents transparency and ethics to a city who desperately needs professionalism and a turnaround. Talk is cheap. Promises are made, but are they ever kept? My words to the people of Boynton Beach are facts. I've served the people as a Commissioner before dealing with senior citizens, the youth, and the planning board, helping design a city. I look at my job, your City Commissioner, as an honor and a privilege. I'm David Merker. I'm asking you to vote. And more important, as I said before, Call me. Talk to me. People are doing it now.
Mr. Brenner? No, I've got my amp. Thank you.
Hello, I'm James Bray. I'm running for District Three Commissioner. I want to thank the League of Women Voters of Palm Beach County and Crosspoint Elementary for arranging and hosting this forum. It is intended to be a way for an undecided voter to hear who the candidates are and what they say about Boynton Beach, whether they truly have what it takes to represent the citizens of Boynton Beach. At the end of the night, please ask yourself, who do I, the voter, want to represent me and the city of Boynton Beach? I, James Bray, have a much greater record of recent timely Boynton Beach involvement than that of my opponent. I currently sit on Boynton Beach's Planning and Development Board. Prior to that, I sat on the Code Compliance Advisory Board. I'm on the Sisters Cities Board. I was on the Charter Review Committee, the Floodwater and Mischief Task Force, and the Brand Promise Committee. And I'm on the Government Affairs Committee for both the Greater Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce and the Ritz Association of Boynton Beach. After tonight, it'll be clear that I am the best choice for my district. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
My name is Mike Fitzpatrick. I have been a lifetime resident of District Three. I have volunteered for community service for over 50 years and have served the Boynton Beach as a firefighter paramedic for the last 22 and 1/2 years. A major concern is the credibility of the City Commission. A saying in Boy Scouts is, "Once an eagle, always an eagle." And I will be your eagle scout on the City Commission. I have raised over $18,000 from my campaign because I personally put in $10,000 of my own money. This tells you at least three things. I am a fiscal conservative and I plan aheads. Secondly, I'm not beholden to any one's special interest. And thirdly, I really want to serve you. As my opponent keeps mentioning, my service has been in the past, there's two reasons. I'm working on a civil engineering degree at FAU and I had three weeks for my thermodynamics final. I had cancer and that lost me a year. Thank you.
Mr. Murray.
Good evening. My name is Ken Hall and I'm running also for District Three. Been a longtime resident of the city of Boynton Beach. I'm very familiar with it. I have an A degree in engineering and a BS in business. I served 20 years in the mortgage lending business, making loans to large and multi-unit developments and single-family residences. I also, after that, was a 20-year... I'm a 20-year retiree from the city of Boynton Beach in the Engineering Department where I was responsible for issuing the comments and engineering reviews on every big development you see in this city today. And I'm very proud of that. I also started my own business, Diabon Incorporated. We built some houses in early Wellington. So I'm proud of those facts. And I think I'm very qualified to be your District Three Commissioner. I'd like to get some things done and I'm not sure how much more time I have, but I'm going to encourage and support a civil cooperative commission. I'd like to identify incidents that happened outside the city of Boynton Beach.
Mr. Hall, I'm sorry, but your timer is up. Mr. Hendricks.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alan Hendricks. I'm running for District Three City Commission. It's great to see all of you out there. This is what our city needs, is an active community. I professionally am a landscape architect. What that translates to is I'm a little bit of an engineer. I'm a little bit of a landscape designer. I work developers, basically. We work from every aspect of development, from due diligence to final COs. And we do large, large projects, the size of our district kind of projects. I'm excited because I believe I can bring my skillsets to bear fruit on the needs of Boynton Beach. Right now, I see two main needs that we have in our district. And one is our neighborhoods need a lot of support. The other is urban redevelopment, which is my passion. I'm looking forward to working together to make sure that we not only get it done, but we get it done in a way that's going to make all of us very, very excited about being in Boynton Beach.
Mr. Casella.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum and I'd like to thank all of you for coming. I'm Joe Casella. I'm a candidate for District Four City Commissioner. Originally from Massachusetts and I chose Boynton Beach after spending many vacations in the area. It was here where I met my future wife, Josephine, and our lovely daughter, Trinity Rose. It was the unique character of this city and its amenities that made it our choice to make it our permanent home upon my retirement. As your full-time Commissioner, I would look forward to working together with all the Commissioners, our City Manager, and the CRA to build our commercial tax base and to retain and expand our businesses, making them vibrant again. We need to attract new businesses and strengthening our local economy through job creation. It's time to tell the business community, Boynton's open again and we're ready to move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
Hello, I'm Sharon Gerszewicz. I'm running for City Commissioner for several reasons. As a homeowner in District Four and as a small business owner in the east side of the city, I've always, for lack of a better term, on the west, felt like the redheaded stepchild. I just don't feel that there's enough unity, west and east, to make us in the west want to go east. Or anything for east to want to go west. And I think that there's so much we can do to bring us together, to make Boynton more exciting from east to west, not just concentrate in one area or another. We have the metal shopping center in our District Four that right now is really not doing much. Those are the things that I would like to see us bring some more development, some more exciting businesses and restaurants to us on the west side also. Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon.
My name is Don Scanlon. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this event on and I'd like to thank all of you for attending. About 13 years ago, after a 23-year military career, where I served six years as a helicopter pilot with a unit that became famous by the movie Black Hawk Down and as well, most recently, was the unit that took the SEALs in to get Bin Laden. My wife and I found ourselves or decided to move to Boynton Beach. I believe to be a good City Commissioner, you need to understand the functions of the city. I first started getting involved with the city when people in my neighborhood asked me as I was helping to solve problems in the neighborhood. They said, "You ought to run for the City Commission." So I told them I'd check into it. I started being involved with the city. I took the City Services Institute, part on by the city, which I highly recommend the citizens to do so you can learn a lot about how the city runs. I also took leadership Boynton Beach, put on by the Chamber of Boynton Beach so I could learn more about the businesses and the other aspects of Boynton Beach.
Ms. Anthony, sorry, your timer is up.
Thank you.
Mr. Crabbitt.
Good evening. My name is Corey Crabbitt. I'm running to be your District Four Commissioner. I want to thank you all for being here tonight and I want to especially thank my wife, Erica. She's been fixing signs that had fallen down and knocking on doors. We've knocked on over 1,000 doors the past month and 1/2 and couldn't do it without her and our family, friends, and neighbors here tonight as well. Thank you very much. I'm an attorney by profession. I own my own firm. I'm a job creator. I'd like to do the same for Boynton Beach. Create jobs, improve the economy. Because my wife and I and our family, we're vested in this community. We have a three-month-old daughter who we want to see raised in this community. And the silver lining of the housing crisis, there's a lot of young families that are here and ready to help Boynton grow. Thank you.
This concludes the opening statements. We are now going to start with the question portion. We had a card draw and Ms. Gerszewicz... I'll get this by the end of the night. Did I say her? Gerszewicz won the card draw, so she gets the first question. Because there are 10 of you, you do not have to respond to every question, but if you do, I will move from Ms. Gerszewicz's left. If you wish to answer the question, raise your hand and pass the one microphone that we have. So here's the first question. What do you see as the most pressing issue preventing Boynton Beach from prospering?
And I've got to go first, right?
Yes, you do.
I'm elaborating my thoughts, but once I do, they usually come out. There's a lot of things, I think, that are sort of standing in our way right now, but we have so much potential if we can just get the right people working together and the right unity, you know, with everybody in all parts of the city to come together to help us to prosper. We've seen so many areas, you know, Delray Beach, even Lake Worth is doing such a great job and we really need to do a little bit more advancement. We should be at or exceeding where any of those times are at this particular point.
Thank you. We're going to move the microphone to the left.
Thank you. First off, if I'm elected Commissioner, my number-one priority is going to be economic development. In my day job, I worked for Workforce Alliance. My and my staff work with the Business Development Board to bring businesses into this county and to the city. I have, in fact, already informally talked with the staff members of the Business Development Board and asked them some of the things that we could do as a city to bring more businesses into Boynton Beach. So I think in my job, I've already been involved in economic development. Further in the last year, I held job seminars at the Boynton Beach and brought citizens from Boynton Beach to the library and taught them and helped them do their resumes and helped them learn how to do job skills, job searches, how to recognize transferable skills. If they were in a job that no longer is in demand, I helped them learn how to translate those skills into other skills. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbitt.
The answer to your question is pretty simple. The city needs stability. Stability, stability, stability. Once there's a stable government, businesses will feel comfortable coming to the Commission and investing in the city. Right now, Boynton Beach is too high a risk of a city to invest in. That's why people are investing in Delray and Boca. There's no reason other than the government hasn't been stable. As a professional, I will bring professionalism to the city and bring stability. That's a simple answer. Thank you.
Thank you. A League member is going to walk behind and take... Mr. Merker, your hand is up. The microphone is behind you, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's going to be the mic lady here.
Thank you. It's simple. As I've stated many, many times during this campaign, I've been fortunate that I've served as a City Commissioner in the state of New Jersey. When you want to develop, you invite people in. You sit at the kitchen table, so to speak. You hear what they have to say, of course, with the public around and listening, and you have several meetings dealing with different properties or different ideas. And the most important, once you get the foundation of what builders or developers want, just as you people have come to listen to what we have to say, as a Commissioner, I invite you to give your input at the same kitchen table that you have the developers. Open government is that essential. And that's what has been lacking. Open government, professionalism, and ethics to our city.
Our problem is twofold. First part, lack of stability in our government, which Corey touched on. The people who are our government are not doing the job of the people. And if they were, we would be a lot further down the road on a lot of different issues. We'd feel more communicated with. We'd feel more like we had an ear in hearing them. We would feel like we had more things going on and we're being listened to. We need that first. We can't get past that, we can't have anything. But then again, we're not voting. If more people voted, we have elections being won by 25, by seven, such small numbers. You look at the total number of registered voters, total number of our citizens in Boynton Beach, and you see who's actually voting. It's a twofold problem. Our elected officials and our voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Stability in the city government is a problem, but that one's relatively easily fixable. The main underlying problem in economic development, I believe, is perception of crime. You can't feel happy and prosperous if you don't feel safe. So the most intractable problem currently facing the city is our crime. And we need to work on that and get that under control and from that, economic development will flow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hope.
First thing we do before we start building new bridges and new landscaping and streetscapes and people walking down thoroughfares and highways that nobody walks anyway, is to get Boynton back its good image that we used to have. This is a good city and the people on it are really nice. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't partake in it because some of us are snowbirds. Some of us got more important things to do to go to the City Commission. I agree with the party that said it, the gentleman that said it before here in the mayor's... mayor's seat, all right? That I would like to see, that maybe the television be... have a television so that the people in homes could see what happens every week, every month in the Commission meetings. And let's get Boynton back on a good track and get good publicity for us all.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that the mic move back to Ms. Brenner. She'll take a dip. The question was, what do you see as the most pressing issue preventing Boynton Beach from prospering?
Well, stability is one thing, but also economics is another. We need to get back on track with better businesses as well as we need to work on our budgetary issues. We're not going to prosper when we have looming liabilities, receivables out there. We need to look at all these economic factors. And I think that economics is really important, most important.
Okay. We're going to move the mic. I believe, Mr. Hendricks, you've had your head... move it back to Mr. Hendricks. Thank you very much.
That is an awesome question. And one I've had to kind of sit here and wrap my head around. Our most substantial block to prosperity that I see is twofold at least. One is dysfunction that we've been going through with our city government. And the other is lack of focus. When we focused our attention on Renaissance Commons in the Congress corridor, we were successful. The CRA is so spread out that they're doing great work, but we don't always see what they're doing. And it's a huge undertaking. So the recession didn't help us in our downtown corridor or federal corridor, but the economics are coming back. The development will come back. My concern is we're going to have to work hard to get it right. And so I think that focus will help us get to where we want to be.
Thank you. Mr. Casella, did you...
I think, like the likely candidates up here have said, it's image. And it's no secret what's happened to Boynton Beach in the last two years has left the city floundering and stagnant. And whoever gets elected to this new commission is going to have to work together as a team. It's all about us pulling together in one direction, moving the city forward. There can't be these internal battles that seem to be going on. I too have been knocked on hundreds of doors, maybe not 1,000, but hundreds of doors. And the voter apathy out there is sad. It's a sad state of affairs when we... 26 positions in our volunteer boards can't be filled. The people have no interest. It starts from the top. It starts with the leadership that sits up there in our Commission meetings and portrays that we're working together. We're all in it together.
I think that completes the answers for that question. We're going to move on to the next question and we're going to start this with Mr. Scanlon. And the question is, what management skills do you possess that make you qualified to participate in the running of the city?
Well, I detailed out a lot of the effort that I've taken already in the last four years to be prepared to run for this position. I didn't just fall out of the tree this last short period of time to start being a City Commissioner. I have a master's degree in logistics management, a master's in science, and it was essentially a statistics degree. I learned how to crunch the numbers. That's one of the things that got me the chair of the Finance Advisory Committee, is that I can crunch numbers with the best of them. But I also have a master's in science of strategic studies. And that degree taught me how to make decisions in the absence of data. And to technically answer your question, those of you in business may know what Six Sigma is. I'm also a Six Sigma black belt. That is somebody that doesn't have anything to do with karate. It has to do with somebody that knows how to go into a business, look how things are running, and do process improvements. I have a toolkit of management skills that I can draw from to help improve the way we do things. Thank you.
Mr. Crabbitt, do you care to answer? Okay. Could we move the mic down here? Ms. Brenner? Ms. Brenner's going to answer.
I... From being a real estate broker and having a small brokerage with my family, I was able to increase that to an income level where my parents were able to retire early. I had a state certified appraiser and I had a firm of my own where I helped families reduce their taxes. I valued property in three different counties as well as I worked very closely with a lot of attorneys as a special consultant on valuations having to do with government and banks. I was an asset manager for two separate banks, Fortune 500 companies, where I managed multimillion-dollar company, multimillion-dollar portfolios of property across the country. And I was able to have a strategy that really impacted communities from the foreclosure crisis. I was educator as well as I am a community association manager. So I have all the tools and the financial background to really have management skills. Thank you.
Mr. Merker.
Pardon me for being redundant and repetitive. I've done this. I wanted to do this. I've been a City Commissioner. I've sat down with banks. I've sat down with attorneys. The town I come from, some of you may know, is Fort Lee, New Jersey. From residential town to a town that was mixed with high rises. Developers came, the people came. It's simple. When a city's in trouble, what do you need? You need new ideas and experience. That's what I present to you. New ideas and experience. I've served and been committed to people.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yep. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
As a fire lieutenant paramedic, it is a management position in the city. So I observed the city bureaucracy for 22 years. I have a BA in political science. I have a second BA in economics. I ran my own building contractor company for 10 years. I've served on many city committees such as medical insurance committee for three years, planning and development for five years, code enforcement for three years, recreation parks for five years. Thank you.
I gave you a brief summary of my background and I think I'm well qualified for the position. Having my own development company and built houses out in Wellington early on. 20 years in the mortgage lending business, doing appraisals, doing credit, checking the things that developers, you have to check before you let a developer get the money to build his project. Then 20 years, just recently retired from the city. 20 years in the engineering department. I know how the city works from the inside. In fact, I know a lot of the people working there. I'll tell you what, you people are lucky. You've got some of the nicest employees, in my opinion, in Palm Beach County. And they're working on short staff because of the problems with the recession. And I know how the city works and I've seen how these developers work. And trust me, if I was elected, I'm not going to let any of these developers kind of sideline us with the new, "More taxes if you let me build this." No way.
Anyone else? Mr. Hendricks?
The question was specifically about management talents. This is my second career. My first career was hotel and restaurant business and I started as a valet-parker and worked my way up into executive-level management. The career I'm in now is engineering and surveying and land development. I've been with the company for 10 years and they just made me a vice president a couple of years ago. My management style is that where we work together. It's not a top-down style. It's a finding-solutions style. And we've been able to manage projects that have a budget, the size of the city budget, on working on residential developments and commercial developments. So those are the management skills that I bring to the table.
Thank you. Mr. Casella, did you?
I can get up here and tell you, I don't have I can get up here and tell you, I don't have half the degrees half these gentlemen and ladies have up here, but what I do bring to the table is common sense. Common sense. I spent 31 years plus years as a professional firefighter in Massachusetts. I achieved a rank of lieutenant with the charge of a chef. And I can tell you, management skills come into effect at 2:00 in the morning when all heck is breaking out. This is what I bring to the table. I bring a solid background and I bring the skills of building a strong alliances. And I know two and two has to equal four. So this is what I hope to bring to the commission.
Ms. Gersovich.
I just, I want to say that I love this city so much that in 2001, when I opened my own real estate company, I named it Boynton Beach Rotary. So I think that shows my love for this city. I've served on the planning and development board for the city since 2005 and I'm current chair. As the broker owner of a real estate company with 22 agents, I do believe we have to work at keeping the peace every single day with a lot of people in a lot of different capacities. And I get complimented every single day. I get many people coming back to me referring their family, their friends to me over and over again because they feel they can trust me and because I do such a good job for them. I feel, I mean, there's so much I want to say and I only have 15 more seconds, but as a business owner, I can certainly, you know, prove that I have the ability to work with everybody. And as a homeowner, I am concerned about making sure that our property taxes and everything are in balance. Thank you.
Okay, that completes the answers for that question. Mr. Kravitt, we're going to start the next question with you. What should be done to increase the tax base in the city?
That's a great question. The answer is very simple. The fastest way to increase tax revenue is to develop those empty lots that are along US 1. It's, that's it in a nutshell. You know, we already have the highest millage rate in southern Palm Beach County. I don't think any of us want to pay any more taxes out of our pockets. Let's get businesses in here, let's use that land that's there and get the city going.
Thank you. Could we move the mic up to Ms. Brenner? Thank you very much.
To quickly increase the tax base, we need to have development, like Corey said, but we also need to start, stop using the most valuable property on our rolls for nonprofits. We have to really start making sure that we're very careful on how we develop those lots. We have to start increasing, we have to start getting businesses into the city. We have to start making sure that we have a good hub of businesses downtown as well as in our main business area. So I really think that development is one thing, but also business is another.
Thank you. Mr. Merker, did you want to respond?
Sometimes when I talk to myself, I say, life is complicated, but then life is also simple. Being redundant and repetitive, you have to bring the people to the table. I'm saying this over and over and over again because you have to advertise the city. And the way you advertise the city is to show the stability of this city and the stability of the city is the people that represent you. That's us who would like to be your city commissioner. So you're choosing someone who you feel is experienced, articulate and will be able to sit down with the developers and even more important, sit down with you, the people in front of me and say, "Help me, I want your ideas." So from your ideas, I can transform them to the principle of developing and bringing in, what I use.
Mr. Merker, I'm sorry, your time is up. Anyone else? Mr. Brink?
We have to do two things. We do smart development, not overdevelopment, and property valuations. Actually get the property worth more, our own properties, the properties that we're taxing already to the hill. If those are worth more, then you're already raising how much money you have. So it's not just one answer. It's not just developing, but it's actually increasing what our homes are worth. And we can't just keep raising the millage and we had been going recently. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Fitzpatrick?
As been stated, the quickest way is to fill up the empty lots. However, you have to make sure there is a long-term strategy too. And for the long term, we have to turn Boynton Beach into a more livable city and I believe that is more green space. If you look at the cities with the best tax bases in Palm Beach County such as Jupiter, Wellington, Boca Raton, or even High Pluxo, they all have a good tree policy, they all have a lot of open space. So there needs to be a long-term development where we do something fairly immediately, but in long term, there's a gradual increase to increase everybody's houses over time. Property value. Thank you.
Mr. Wall, did you want to respond?
Yeah. One of the best ways I think we could encourage all land here to be developed as quickly as possible is to have the CRA and perhaps in conjunction with the city, set up a marketing plan and let's take some pictures of these properties and let's send them out to those types of developers who would like to move into the city. Certainly a lot of coal people up north right now. I think a lot of corporations wouldn't mind buying some land down here in beautiful Boynton Beach. And perhaps even the CRA should consider selling some of their property. They bought a lot of land and they've done a lot of nice things, but why hold on to this property if they could sell it and bring some money back into the coffers?
Anyone else? Mr. Hendricks?
There's some great ideas that have been already thrown out here and here's one that I don't think has been brought up yet is our neighborhoods are moving in the wrong trajectory. We need to work to improve our neighborhoods so we can improve our property values. I think we should probably look at being creative. We can be creative on the city side. Potentially a Boynton Beach corridor and overlay to where we bring in some more commercial space, maybe some office space, low-rise office space. That's kind of what I've been thinking. Besides the development of mixed use all along our federal corridor. And that will help raise our property, our tax base. As was mentioned before, we've let go of a lot of our commercial in the city. We just need to rebuild that and we can get creative and do that at the city level.
Mr. Casella?
It's a great idea to develop these lands that these gentlemen are talking about and they're right. We've got to do that. And I think that what we need is a commissioner, a full-time commissioner, who's going to be available 24/7 to meet with these investors and these businessmen who want to come in and invest in our city at any time of the day. This commission spot here cannot be a part-time job. I firmly believe that it is going to take a full-time person to fill this. Touching on the nonprofits, I would like to introduce a program, like a pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes, where these nonprofits make a donation to the city for their lack of paying taxes. The values on that could be determined, what we start our small workup, but instead of paying taxes that they don't pay, we could get a donation to the city. It's called a pilot program.
Mr. Casella, your time is up. Anyone else? Ms. Chris? Yes, go ahead.
One of the things that I would like to see is some more positive. There's so much that the city is doing right now that so many people don't even know about. Our Galaxy School Elementary, which has had the kinetic art exhibit, which was 2,000 people came to our city. How many people, as I talked before, uniting east and west, even knew about it in the west side because there's not enough advertisement? There's a lot of people out west that don't even know that there's an election going on, which to me is very, very sad. But we've got to do something to get it out. I've heard some people say that, "Oh, well, it's hard to work with the building department or it's hard to do this." The people that I talk to in real estate that do go to the city and my experiences over the years as a Realtor where I've had to bring people in, have questions answered for something that they wanted to, the response is so fast. And if I email on a late Thursday afternoon for someone, I have the first answer Monday morning.
Mr. Scanlon?
They're great. And they don't get enough accolades for that.
To increase our tax base, one of the things we certainly need to do is recruit more businesses and make sure that we work with the businesses that are here to stay here and grow. As I said, I, my day job, I work with the organizations that bring businesses to this county and has done that over and over again. The, I'm going to be on the record, and I am on the record already, having attended every, almost every city commission meeting for the last four years and about half the CRA meetings for the last four years, that I have spoken before that I'm not against nonprofits being in our city because I think they bring things to our community that don't show up on somebody's bottom line. And believe me, I can crunch numbers, I know bottom line's important, but I also know that there's other things that don't show up on the bottom line that those nonprofits bring to our community. And I think we should encourage all development, nonprofit and profit.
Thank you.